Well, it's 5:30. Okay, love it. All right. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. My name is Catherine Harrington. I'm the very proud president and CEO of the West Des Moines Chamber of Commerce, and it's my honor and my distinct privilege to lead today the West Des Moines City Council Candidate Forum. Tonight's forum is designed to help residents get to know the candidates running for mayor and city council. And what we have today is we have our mayor, Russ Trimble, who is our incumbent, with challenger MJ Hoag. We have our city council Ward One incumbent, Kevin L. Trevillion, challenger Jenny Doak-Kerns, Council Three -- city council Ward Three incumbent Doug Loetz. There's no challenger that's been filed against Mr. Loetz. And city council at-large incumbent Rene Hardman. And there's been no challenger filed for Rene Hardman. So just as a reminder, elections this year are held on Tuesday, November 4. Visit the Iowa Secretary of State's website or Paul Pates' address to find out where your polling place is on November 4. So the format for today's discussion is each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. And then at the end, we're going to have a fun lightning round as well. We have a handy timer. Thank you so much, Al Wamboldt, to help everybody keep on track. And we have one hour. It's going to go very, very fast. I also want to thank Al Wamboldt and Ryan Jacobson and your team for making this possible today, and the city council as well. So we asked the community to pre-submit questions in advance. We got a great response, so we'll be asking some of those questions today. This is not a debate, so we do ask that each candidate do not interrupt others, be respectful. I know you all will be. I will be calling on each person to answer a question. And again, we're timing, so we're fair for everybody involved. I will rotate from candidate to candidate, and I'll let you know when it's your time to answer the question. Thank you for your consideration, and let's get right to it. So we're going to start with introductions of our candidates to get to know them a little bit better. And every candidate has one minute to answer this. So we're going to start with MJ Hoag. Please introduce yourself, share your background, and tell us why you're running.
I thought we got two minutes.
You get one minute.
Okay. So as you guys, you know, probably looking at me, I imagine your first thought is, man, what is this poorly dressed, socially awkward weirdo I've never heard of doing running for mayor? And you know, like, that's a popularity contest. Must be a little crazy, right? And that is a very good question. I grew up here. I went through Exmathas, Stowe Valley. I was here for the floods in '93. You could canoe off our front porch. West Des Moines has changed a lot since then. As I've gotten older, I wanted to understand how our city works, so I started going to council meetings. Sometimes I'll do a little presentation on a topic I care about. I'm a familiar face to several of the various boards. I'm not on any, but I go to a lot of meetings. I'm the only member of the public regularly attends the all-day budget workshop. I've been to the Community Engagement Institute, Police Academy, Fire Academy. Point is, I'm not actually just some rando. I've been here a lot.
Thank you, MJ. Okay, Jenny Doak-Kerns, one minute.
Okay. Let me make sure what's going on. Okay. All right. Sorry about that. My name is Jenny Doak-Kerns. I'm a teacher, a mom, an Army wife, and about to be a grandmother for the first time next month, so very excited. And I'm a resident in the Valley Junction area. I live up by Hillside Elementary School. I've always been dedicated to service. That is something that is a value in my family, when I -- both professionally and in my personal space. Professionally, I'm a teacher that has worked mostly with at-risk populations. I've worked with students learning English for the first time, students who need to get their high school diplomas. I've even worked in the prison system to help students get job credentials and sometimes that high school diploma, and even college credit as they get ready to get out, to meet the community. I'm running for city council Ward One because of that commitment to service. I am ready to be a leader that will bring our community together and solve problems. One of the best things I do is bring people together.
Thank you, Jenny. Our next person here is Rene Hardman.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rene Hardman, and I am -- live in Ward Three, and I am member at large. I have served for eight years. I am running for reelection. I am mayor pro temp this year. Also, I chair public safety. I'm the secretary of the West Des Moines Community Foundation. I co-chair planning and development. I'm the liaison to the Human Services Department. I also serve on the Valley Junction Foundation as a liaison. So I have served on about 21 boards throughout this community, and so service has been my middle name. Most nonprofits know that when I serve on the boards, I aspire to leadership roles because I give, and I give generously, my time, talent, and treasure. So I'm running for West Des Moines because I love this great city. I have proven that I have a track record of showing up and being present wherever our citizens may need us. So I look forward to more discussion.
Thank you, Rene. Candidate Doug Loetz. Loetz, sorry.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. In 1997, I showed up in May of 1997 in West Des Moines, Iowa, with a 1983 Pontiac Grand Prix and an apartment at Sun Prairie. I've been here ever since. I'm running because this city's been really, really good to me over the last 28 years. I also am running because it's in my family. My grandfather was a county supervisor. My mom is the current mayor of my hometown and spent two years on the council. My dad was two years on -- two terms on the council, and my brother's on the school board. This is my way of giving back to the community that has given so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next candidate, Kevin Trevillion.
Hi, I'm Kevin Trevillion, Ward One, city councilman. I've been in public service to the city of West Des Moines for 45 years. When I first started with West Des Moines EMS in 1980, retired from West Des Moines Waterworks after 31 years, and now I've been on city council for 16 years. I was born and raised in West Des Moines. I know what the desires are of our residents, and I have always been a voice of the people. When I first ran for city council, as a matter of fact, my tagline then was "Your Voice on the City Council," and I've continued that for 16 years. I like city politics because it is not politically driven. You truly represent the people of West Des Moines, not a political party. I'm running for reelection because we've still got a lot of things that we want to get done, that we started down the path, and I'd like to help get those completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Russ Trimble.
So I'm Russ Trimble. I started -- I served for seven years on the West Des Moines Human Service Advisory Board before getting elected to council in 2009. I served on the city council then for 12 years, and served on a number of boards and commissions over that time. After 12 years on the council, I got elected mayor in 2021, and being mayor is the greatest honor of my life. As I've been mayor, we've cut taxes without impacting services. We've grown jobs in the economy, attracting businesses to the city that no other city in the state has. We've had a game-changing quality of life amenities. We've revitalized Valley Junction. We've added affordable housing so our kids and our grandkids could one day come back here and live and work in the community in which they were raised. We've delivered high-speed, affordable, reliable broadband to every home and every business. We've invested record amounts in maintaining existing infrastructure. We've increased funding for police and technology, for fire EMS to keep people safe as we grow. I'm running because I love this community, and we have a lot of things to do. We've got a lot of great momentum, and we're not done yet. We are forced to be reckoned with, and we're going to continue down the path that we've been going.
Thank you, Russ. All right, now we're going to go to vision. What is your top priority for West Des Moines in the next four years, and how will you achieve it? Let's start now with Jenny Doak-Kerns.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm excited to answer this question. So I am a huge advocate for affordable housing, and I think affordable housing is a major issue in the city of West Des Moines. We always say this is a great place to live, work, and play. A lot of people can play and work here, but they can't live here. And affordable housing, you have to understand, this is not talking about necessarily subsidized housing, things like -- an affordable home right now is $270,000. That's the last estimate I heard for what -- that's considered affordable housing. That is still out of reach for a lot of people. So I really -- and I think in Ward One, we are uniquely ready to meet that need because we have opportunities to renovate existing homes in the Valley Junction area. We have the changes going on around Valley West Mall, and an opportunity for more housing options there as well when we take in that new plan. And then look at the southern part of Ward One, where we have all of that development. There's so much potential for us to solve this problem.
Thank you, Jenny. Now we're going to go to MJ Hoag.
So for me, it's not one thing. It's a bunch of things. It's telling engineering, hey, let's move to road design standards that have a bigger impact on -- bigger emphasis on pedestrian safety. It's shifting cadences so that zoning and code changes aren't some decades-long process, but something that we're doing all the time. And, you know, like, every issue of the West Des Moines Magazine is a good opportunity to sell one of those changes to the public. It's leaning on finance to make sure that we're budgeting for things like road replacements 80 years in advance, because we'll be all dead and gone by the time, you know, the roads need that. But the city will still be here, and it is our duty to set up our kids and great-grandkids for success rather than leading them, holding the bag on the bill. It's also changing how elected officials evaluate the job that they're doing, adding things like, are we looking at housing affordability? Are we judging ourselves based on housing affordability, getting better or worse? And so on. Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. Rene Hardman.
My vision for the city is to continue to do the great things that are going on. When you really, really examine the municipality of West Des Moines, we all in this room, if we live here or even visit here, should be extremely proud of this city. I believe that we need to continue, and my vision is strategic economic development, quality-of-life initiatives. We need to invest in public safety, in EMS, affordable housing. And what we do in the Valley West development area is going to be a game changer and exciting. You'll hear more about that. So we've got to be able to reinvest in what's going to be happening in the Valley West area. So lots of great things happening. We're on the cusp of wonderful things to continue to allow this city to be a city where people consider us a role model, and I really do believe that we are. So those are the kinds of things that are part of my vision as it relates to some of the things I want to accomplish as a city councilperson. Third-term city councilperson.
Thank you, Rene. Russ Trimble.
So my top priority is to make this city the best city in America in which to live, work, play, raise a family, and one day retire. And how do you do that? You do that by using the formula that we've been using. You work to cut taxes when responsible to do so, thinking of seniors on fixed incomes and young families trying to make ends meet, as well as people living in apartments, who when the taxes go up, so too does their rent. We work on continuing to grow jobs in the economy and bringing in businesses that no other city in the state has. We continue to add the game-changing quality of life amenities, like the event center at the Recplex that's coming, the Arboretum and the 26.2-mile marathon loop trail. We make West Des Moines a destination. We bring in the Water Park Hotel and Convention Center. We continue to revitalize Valley Junction, not only the businesses, but the homes in that area. We bring Valley West Mall back to greatness. We keep investing in public safety to keep us safe as we continue to grow, and we keep building the momentum that we've been building so that we become the greatest city in America in which to live, work, play, and raise a family.
Thank you, Russ. Kevin Trevillion.
To maintain a balanced budget and keep our reserve funds high, currently have a $47.7 million reserve fund, and that's critical, given what the legislature is doing to us. We need to look at continuing to lower the property tax, city tax levy whenever possible, at the same time keeping our city resources and services at the level that they currently are and what our residents expect out of West Des Moines. We need to ensure that the older parts of West Des Moines, Valley Junction, Ward One specifically, are not forgotten as we continue to expand to the south, because that's where our growth is now. We've done a good job over the years, and we need to continue to make sure that the historical part of West Des Moines stays intact.
Thank you, Kevin. Doug Loetz.
I'm a huge believer in economic development. Businessperson, I have a stake in three different businesses, and I think the dignity of work is something that brings communities to a higher level. It doesn't just lift the boats of a few good economic development workers. It lifts the boats of everybody. Rising tide lifts all boats. So that's my vision. I want to bring advanced manufacturing. I want to bring more good insurance companies to town. And we've already started on that. Started with a 2040 plan, which was published this last year. I personally am spearheading a lot of that. I was just in Chicago yesterday talking to one of my software clients, going into everything about expanding to come to West Des Moines. We've got the workforce. We've got people that can help your business grow, and we will help provide incentives for you to come here. I am a huge believer in economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right. Our second question, growth and development section. How will you balance new development with preserving the community's character and quality of life? Let's start with Russ Trimble.
Yeah, I think new development out west is awesome, and we're going to be growing down south and southwest as well, but you cannot forget about older parts of the city as we continue to grow out west. We've worked really hard to revitalize Valley Junction, not only the business district, but as I mentioned, we worked to come up with housing programs to help preserve our affordable housing and beautify the neighborhoods and help first-time homebuyers get into their homes. And we need to continue to do those things. We worked to revitalize A Street. We provided assistance to Gilroy's Keystone apartment building. We've got more to do on A Street. We need to continue to work on that. And the Valley West Mall is going to be a huge deal, and I can't wait to dig into that. We've already been working on it. It is going to be unbelievable, something out of a storybook. I think you guys are going to absolutely love it. It is going to be walkable. It is going to be self-contained living area with restaurants and retail and entertainment, sidewalk cafes and green space, maybe a water feature, different residential products where people can live. And it will have everything that residents that live there could ever want to have, from a gym to a nail salon to a dog park and a place to get your hair cut. It is going to be absolutely phenomenal.
Thank you, Russ. Let's go to Kevin Trevillion for that same question.
Well, kind of continuing on what I talked about in the beginning is that maintain the budget and continue to lower property taxes, continue with some of the programs we've got in Valley Junction for the Property Improvement Fund and Regulatory Compliance Fund for the various businesses that are located down in Valley Junction to make sure those buildings stay intact. We don't want to have another historic building coming down because of lack of maintenance. We also need to continue to work with single-family homes to help the residents be able to stay in their house and keep them maintained. The worst thing that you can do is have somebody that's on a fixed income that then can't afford to put a new roof on their house or put new windows in or whatever it might be, and then has to move, paying higher rent, and now you've got a house that's dilapidated. So we need to continue these efforts and keep the houses intact.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Rene Hardman.
Thank you, Catherine. I think a lot of what I heard the other participants say, I do echo that. We have spent a lot of time looking at development opportunities in Valley Junction, providing with significant programs, public-private partnerships, by the way. I think we got $1.62 million from private. We put in $1.62 million to have programs available for folks to invest in their homes so -- improve their homes. I'm a proponent of affordable housing. When I ran the first time, I went to go talk to a developer, a big developer in town, and they told me that affordable housing on my brochure was going to probably lose the election. I kept it on there because I believe in it. I believe that we need to work towards affordable housing. I was -- on Saturday, I was at -- in the Junction with Habitat with three homes in West Des Moines, red, white, and blue. They're all red, white, and blue, homes that we got to see people move into. I was really proud of the partnership from the city to make sure that we have people that can afford homes right here in West Des Moines.
Thank you, Rene. Doug Loetz.
Well, I think about growth in the sense that there's only two paths. One's a good deal, and the other, if you're not growing, you're shrinking. Your tax revenues are shrinking. It's a sign of a dying community, so we have to continue growing. However, one of the things I'm proud of is voting for some of the standards in places like Valley Junction that help preserve that history. I want to make sure that we continue to invest in infrastructure and the roads. If you've ever driven in some of the adjacent communities, the roads are not as good as what ours are. We're lucky. We invest a lot of money in technology to help us do that, and there's areas that we have to continue to redevelop while the west and south are gone. So I think it's a balancing act. I think the other thing that comes in that people don't think about is fiscal responsibility that goes along with it. Our triple-A credit rating helps us spend less money in interest when we borrow it for infrastructure, and so we have to have a balancing act. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. All right, Jenny Doak-Kerns.
All right. I love this question because I feel like it really applies well. Sorry, I'm getting this going. Really applies well to Ward One. Honestly, we're experiencing so many opportunities in Ward One right now with the fact that it includes the Valley West Mall area. And as Mayor Trimble was saying, all the possibilities and all the options there. And I love this idea of a multi-use space and the ability to maybe incorporate more housing in that space as well. And one thing that's been really interesting is I've been knocking doors. I was knocking doors, actually, you know, we go all the way down into Warren County, right? And that area is just blowing up with development, Veterans Parkway and around Highway 5. And those neighbors are wondering what is going to be in their backyard next year. So we really want to be thinking about that as well. And of course, if there's anywhere -- I mean, my heart is in Valley Junction because I live there, but we need to make sure that we are preserving the historic nature of that space, but not afraid of progress for the sake of progress. We want to make sure that we are open to the right progress when we have the opportunity.
Thank you, Jenny. And MJ.
Yeah, so I think it is okay for new stuff to be different from old stuff, right? Jordan Creek Mall looks and feels completely different from Fifth Street and Valley Junction, but they're both shopping districts. And it's okay for neighborhoods to change. It is okay for, you know, that change to arise organically and to allow it to happen. But what we do need to ensure is that new development not only breaks even from a city finance perspective, but that it increases our financial result. The way we currently do new development generally also brings with it a lot of new costs. And given that we're constantly tightening our belt as a city, I'm not really convinced that we're ensuring the income from those new developments actually outpaces those costs. So that is, I think, an important thing to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. Okay. Our third question relates to economic vitality. How will you strengthen West Des Moines' business climate, both for small businesses and major employers? Let's start with Doug.
Well, thank you, Catherine. I will tell you this. I'm proud to sit on the Finance Committee and manage city finance. Most people won't know this, but we're basically a $1.3 billion asset corporation, roughly $90 million a year budget. And the promise that I tell everyone is I will be the best steward of your tax dollars that I can be. I will spend them as if they are my own. If I think something is a good investment and I think it's going to reap benefits, that's exactly what I'm going to do. If I don't think it's a good investment, I'm not spending your money on that because it's not mine. I will disagree with MJ here a little bit because I sit there and I look at these things and I scrutinize the numbers. I believe we make really good investments here. Sometimes you've got to give a little more, sometimes you give a little less, but ultimately the TIF funding that we do drives the growth, and it is a very sustainable model. And so again, the only promise I'm going to make you is I will spend it. I will be the best steward of your money that I can.
Thank you, Doug. Jenny, we'll go back to you.
All right. Got it? Okay. I do project pretty well. There we go. All right. I would say, I truly feel that one of the biggest things that we can do to increase our business development and economic development is just continue to provide the high quality of life that we are providing here in West Des Moines. And I think the key to that is our schools, the amenities, the community amenities that we have, the lovely parks and recreation system we have, the trails, and again, housing. One thing that we need to make sure that we are creating a space that where business leaders know that they are going to come in and they are going to have an educated workforce that can live and exist in the same space where they work. It's better for the economy if these folks are spending their money here, and it's better for those businesses if their employees can live close to where they work.
Thank you, Jenny. All right. And we're going to go to MJ.
So I think managing taxpayer dollars responsibly starts with making sure that we're accounting for future obligations. The day we pave a road, the clock starts counting down on, you know, spending money on repairs, overlays, replacement. Quick backup envelope math, I'd estimate that about $75,000 per mile per year, one lane in each direction, or about $33 million for our entire road network, which would be a huge chunk of our budget if it was in there. But it isn't, so we have all of this very expensive infrastructure with the clock ticking down on the bill coming due and the plan is kind of hoping that the money will be there. But once we account for those obligations, we can compare it to alternatives, you know, like what if instead of widening a road to two lanes or to four lanes or six lanes, we add capacity through transit, right? That $75,000 a year could add a pretty good amount of transit, and then, you know, maybe you save money on gas because you can take the bus easier.
Thank you, MJ. Kevin Trevillion, same question.
Well, I think with the grand experience that's been proposed out by the Recplex, one of the things that I presented to the developer -- All right, Alan.
Green light.
It's on, isn't it?
There it is.
Okay. All right. Was that we needed to include some affordable housing out there because of the different types of venues that he's going to have. He's going to need a variety of workforce out there. And so he did incorporate that into his plan to have some affordable housing out there. So I think with the TIF, the way we're doing it now is a whole lot different than when the mall was built, Jordan Creek. At that time, everything west of 60th, essentially from E.P. Tree to Mills, was one TIF district. Now, it worked out, but it could have gone south on us with the mall being the only thing developed and all this other barren land. What we do now, like with Microsoft, is that project pays for the entire TIF district, and anything across the street from it then comes into the general fund.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, Russ Trimble.
Yeah, so the question is, how do we strengthen West Des Moines' position as a hub for business and job growth? And I just want to say that West Des Moines has won the award for the best city to do business in every single year since I've been on the council and mayor. That speaks for something. In 2022, my first year as mayor, we were named the SBA Small Business Community of the Year. 2023, we received the Iowa Finance Authority Thriving Communities Award in recognition of the city's strong efforts to meet workforce and housing needs of all income levels. We've got businesses here that no other city in the state has. I'm not going to name them. We need to keep doing what we're doing. We need to have a competitive business and tax climate. We need to maintain our synergistic relationship with the West Des Moines Chamber and our schools. We need to be aggressive yet smart on economic growth and development. We need to continue to do the game-changing quality of life amenities because that attracts and retains the best and the brightest to our community. We need to keep working on adding workforce housing at a measured pace, as well as the most efficient, effective transit system that we can have. We need to work with our Chamber and DMAC on workforce development programs. We punch way above our weight class in West Des Moines, and that's why we are seventh-largest in population, but third-largest in property valuation.
Thank you, Russ. Rene Hardman.
I could say ditto, ditto, ditto on some of that stuff, but I'm going to offer another perspective. The way to spur economic growth is to make sure that you're growing in population. If we are declining in population, it's going to affect the school district. It's going to affect businesses that are wanting to come here. We just two weeks ago had a meeting with some site selectors, trying to encourage them to consider West Des Moines a place to do business. We've got to make sure that West Des Moines is a city that is attractive to all people. We've got to make sure it's a safe city, so we have to continuously invest in public safety and EMS. One of the things when you choose a city, you want to -- you look at the crime rate, okay? And we have a really good police department, an EMS department. That's all about the fabric of this city. So we need to constantly look at things that we do to make sure that this is an attractive place for people to come, to educate themselves. We need to invest in our schools. We need to partner with our schools, and population is going to spur economic development.
Thank you, Rene. All right. We're going to move to talking about public safety. What does a safe community mean to you, and what improvements do you think we need does a safe community mean to you? And what improvements do you think we need to make to create a safe community? Let's start with Russ Trimble.
So if we don't have a safe community, we don't have any of the economic development, quality of life amenities, or anything that we've talked about. We need to make sure that we're continuing to increase funding for public safety, increase the number of officers, firefighters, EMS, as we continue to grow. And we also need to stay on the edge of cutting technology. I mean, we've got, for example, these cameras in West Des Moines that help catch hardened fast criminals and put them in jail. They also deter crime here. So we need to continue to invest in our people and technology, and we need to continue to invest more money as we continue to grow to make sure that we keep people safe here in West Des Moines.
Thank you, Russ. All right, Jenny, same question.
I think right now, it's extremely important to make sure that we are, making sure that our public services are at the highest quality that they probably can't, they possibly can be, as they, as our residents are reporting that they often feel is the case, that we are, we're doing it well. That is only going to get harder as revenue from the state goes down, and we want to make sure that we're not, we're not raising taxes. So it's going to be incredibly important to make sure that we are using those funds correctly. That way we can continue to provide the high-quality safety that we have. I would just add to that, and this kind of goes with the infrastructure and traffic question, had a lot of folks come to me and talk about, especially around the schools, that they don't feel it's safe for their kids to walk home from school because of the way that the traffic is in that area. So I hope we get a chance to talk about that because I really think it's important that we are looking at our infrastructure and if that leads to a safer environment.
Thank you, Jenny. Kevin Trevillion.
From a public safety standpoint, we have a safe city. Our police officers, firefighters, and medics do a phenomenal job in West Des Moines. And they have, even back when the fire department was a complete volunteer fire department. It took so long to get paid firefighters because our volunteers were doing such a great job. And that has continued. We've increased the training for fire, police, and EMS. We do not have a wait list, if you will, when somebody calls in for a 911 call like the city of Des Moines has. When you call in for an emergency, you've got a police officer there within minutes. Fire Department and EMS has a very quick response time as well. That's the most important thing, is to make sure that we keep the staff and equipment up to date and trained properly so they can do the best job possible when something happens. And it's not a case of if, it's when.
Thank you, Kevin. MJ?
Yeah, so like Kevin said, you know, like our police, our fire, EMS, they all do a really nice job. For me, public safety also includes things like Jenny was talking about, are the roads safe, right? So many doors that I've knocked on where people are like, people drive down my street way too fast. And, you know, like, I talked to the city and the city didn't do anything. Like, well, there are lots of options that we can deploy, chicanes, bump outs, speed tables. And not all of them are right for every situation, but there are, you know, it does have to be situational. But, you know, all we really need to get those done is the political will, and that is something that I would be looking to bring to the city.
Thank you. MJ, Rene Hardman.
Well, I'd like to just share that I chair Public Safety Committee, and I've done it for eight years. So I sit in those meetings with EMS and the fire department, the police department. I have a close relationship with Police Chief Scott. He's retiring. We're going to miss him. But they make our city, and I feel West Des Moines is a very safe city. I'm single. I bought a house here some 20-something years ago, and I feel safe. I feel safe leaving my home. I feel safe where I travel. And I feel safe that if something's going on, that the police are just minutes away. So I think we need to continue to make sure that as this city grows, and it is growing, we need to make sure that we have resources to allow this to continue to be a safe city. We have to evaluate that strategically. So we've got one of the best police departments, I think, in the metro.
Thank you, Rene. Doug?
I think we have great police department, great EMS. I continue to support them. I'm going to take a different angle, though. I'm going to go back to economic development. I think if everyone has gainful employment, if people who graduate from Valley can move right into a trade or go off to do whatever they want to do, that is a great thing, and that helps keep crime down. So if we can invest in the economy in West Des Moines, attract good businesses, have good jobs, people won't be needing to do other things. They are busy working. I think that that formula is one for success for a community. And I think about these things in terms of ecosystems. If people have gainful work and employment, everything else goes really well. Now they can afford a home. Now they can, you know, lots of things go along with that. So that's my biggest thing.
Thank you, Doug. All right. Next question, infrastructure and transportation. What is one infrastructure or transportation priority you'd focus on to support the city's future growth? And Doug, we're going to go back to you.
You know, I think the biggest thing to me is to keep these areas in town that maybe are getting a little longer in the tooth in their, maybe some roads need to be done. But the other thing I know is, we do a really good job. If you've never ridden in an adjacent community, you should go because our roads are top-notch. We have great traffic control. You ever tried to drive through, I won't mention the name, Surkisay up on the north side of town, at 5:30 in the afternoon? Good luck. We do really, really well here. I think we need to keep investing in that. And so to do that, you know, the council and I, we've invested money in things like technology to manage the roads. I don't know if you noticed, but we have technology on the back of the trucks that maps the roads and maps every single bump on the roads in West Des Moines. And then we use that data to determine, well, what needs to be fixed and what doesn't. That stuff is fleshed out in plan. I can show you data about it if you're interested in seeing. Thanks.
Thanks, Doug. Rene?
I sat in, I think we sat in on a workshop just about three weeks ago, and it was the most interesting workshop, and it talked about pavement on roads. And it showed every road in the city and where they're at in terms of repair, whether it's, we have to repair it soon, we've got two to five years, we've got a year. So I have never seen such a comprehensive plan that evaluated nothing but pavement and the conditions of pavement, and how long can the roads go without working on them, and how much time we give ourselves. I urge every one of you to see if you can get a copy of that. It was absolutely informative. So we've got people that are paying attention to this. I shared in the story in the workshop that I had surgery in Des Moines, and my friend picked me up from the hospital, and my leg was in a cast, and I was bumping and bumping, and my leg was hurting. I knew the minute I crossed over to West Des Moines, okay? I knew the minute because there was not all these potholes and things like that. I'm not trying to poke fun at Des Moines, but I knew because we care about our roads, we invest in our roads, and we have a comprehensive plan that is absolutely amazing.
Thank you, Rene. Jenny?
This is, as I was mentioning before, a really, really important topic for a lot of folks. And it's one of the things that comes up a lot as I'm knocking doors in the neighborhoods around Valley Junction and in my neighborhood. I'll give the example of the gentleman on 16th, Josh, who reached out and said, you've got to drive down my street south of Ashworth and going out onto Grand and see what that's like. If you know the area, I've driven it a couple of times now and walked it a little bit, but you're coming out at Sacred Heart and Stillwell Junior High. And the crosswalks honestly look like a suggestion. There's not enough, the roads around there cannot handle the traffic that is, it's being asked to handle, and it's creating really, really unsafe situations. So I would say, I hope we really look at how we're looking at our infrastructure, think about road humps, more lights around our crosswalks. And I hope we do this before something happens rather than in response to a tragedy.
Thank you, Jenny. Russ Trimble.
We do a lot of great long-term planning and forecasting, as Councilwoman Hardman suggested. We've got a comprehensive program that we go through, and we test all the roads and the pavement, and we stay on top of those things. We spend more and more money every single year on maintaining our roads, and we're doing a special census to be able to have more population and get more road use tax funds to put towards maintaining our roads. We are a leader in traffic flow. We continue to be. We apply for Iowa Clean Air Retainment Grants all the time. Jim Dickinson does that for us. We've got 114 intersections that are signalized with adaptive traffic signals that help with traffic flow. They sense your car there. They start the timer and the countdown and change the light. But we need to continue to work on smart planning, on land use, infrastructure needs. And we need to continue to build roads the way that we are, making sure that we have enough right-of-way for expansion when the traffic warrants it, and all those kinds of things. We do this for the infrastructure. We do it for budgeting. We look way out, five years in advance, if not more, when it comes to infrastructure and roads. We are way ahead of the game on this, and I'm proud of the job we do.
Thank you, Russ. MJ?
Roads are very expensive, obviously. And you can only widen them so much, and the wider they get, the more unpleasant they become. Fundamentally, the only solution that actually works for solving traffic is viable alternatives to driving. So that means, you know, a bus system that's fast, frequent, and goes the places you want to go and the times you want to be there. That means, you know, a bike system that's fully connected and takes you everywhere. And the ability to rely on there being bicycle parking, you know, a place to lock up your bike when you actually get there. And even if you personally are like, I'm never going to walk or bike or take the bus, that still works out better for drivers because it means those of us who won't be driving are not competing for space on the road with you. It means we're not competing for a parking space with you. And it also allows us to do things like more infill development, which means more tax revenue for the same amount of infrastructure spend. Thank you.
Thank you. MJ. Kevin?
As has been said, that we've got the traffic adaptive systems to keep traffic flowing. We've got the pavement management system to monitor what condition the roads are. So if it's time to do asphalt overlay or a complete reconstruction. We also do traffic counts on roadways to find out if the traffic is increasing to what people think it is. We also then, on new developments, we take in more right-of-way than what is needed for the road at that time. And one example is out there by the Recplex. Okay, it was initially three-lane road. It's wide enough, I believe, for six lanes out there so that when the time comes to put in more pavement because of the more cars as the area develops out there, as it is already with DMU, we've got the room then to go in and just do the work rather than having to go buy right-of-way and negotiate with the property owners, which then just delays the project on the line.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, next question. It's about community engagement. How will you ensure residents' voices are heard in city decision-making and that all parts of our community feel represented? Kevin, we're going to swing back to you.
The biggest thing is to make yourself available by email or phone and let that number be published, which is, for myself, has been from day one. Everybody in West Des Moines, if they've got any information out there about me at all, it always lists my email address and cell phone number. You have to make yourself available, and you have to keep them informed when there's something coming up that's affecting their neighborhood. So that's by going to their neighborhood meetings, having town hall meetings, whatever it might be, to keep the residents that you represent informed and let them know, here's the time and place to go to a committee meeting, a city council meeting, or whatever it might be, so that their voices can be heard, and the council can then make the decisions based on what the residents are telling them that they want or don't want, rather than knowing that, well, here's what's best for you.
Thank you, Kevin. Rene?
My favorite question. When I first ran on my brochure, I put, "Enhance citizen engagement." We serve the people. People do not care how much we know until they know how much we care, period. So you need to be out there. You need to make yourself available, just as what we've just heard. But you have to listen. My motto is to listen, learn, and lead. And that means going out there, listening to someone that totally disagrees with you but trying to understand that perspective. And I've done that. One of the things that I will say, that when there were all these issues going on in Valley Junction about design factors, design buildings, I said on that dais, we should form a citizens' engagement committee. I served on that. And so did Councilman Trevillion. It was a year-long committee, year and a half, where we sat there, listened to the citizens. And I think our work product proves itself on that. So you've got to make yourself available. You got to do the work. You can't run away from it. And you got to talk to people, even though they disagree with you.
Thank you, Rene. MJ?
So one of the things that I would really like to try experimenting with is what's known as a citizens' assembly. So that's where you kind of draft citizens, kind of like jury duty, but we take them from a volunteer pool. And then you have them get educated about specific issues, right? So you'd bring in specific experts related to that field, right? It might be environmental experts or veterinarians if it's related to pets, or, you know, it could be, or, you know, city planners, whatever the issue is, talk to the neighbors as well. And they would be tasked with becoming experts as citizens and then making a recommendation for what to do. And I think you pay those peoples because, you know, so that you're not excluding people based on their ability to participate. And you do that because that gets you really effective, really down-to-earth citizen engagement on whatever issue you're looking at.
Thank you. MJ. Jenny?
I think this is such an important question. I think one of the most important things we can do as representatives for our community is be available and show up. And I want to, I would be a city council person that people would recognize, people would know that they can go to and approach. I want to look for spaces where I can join in a conversation that's happening, but I want to also provide opportunities to invite our neighbors in and allow them to bring their concerns to us so that we can address those. I thought so much when I started doing this that I would be knocking doors and telling people about me. People want me to listen to them. They want us to listen to them. And so I want to create as many opportunities as possible for our citizens to be heard. What are the issues that are important? I've learned so much even just from meeting my neighbors. And they have their finger on the pulse of this city, and I want to help do that, too.
Thank you, Jenny. Doug?
This is easy for me. I mentioned one of the campaign promises I had, that I'll spend your money. I'll be fiscal responsible if I can. The other campaign promise I make is I will be responsive to you when you reach out. I'm distracted by the shelves cookies over here, but I think just having an open ear to listen to people and understand what their problems are, and actually, that's been the most fulfilling thing of doing this the last four years, the people that I've gotten to meet and talk to that I might not have ever met otherwise. That's it.
Thanks, Doug. Russ?
Whoever asks this question has no idea what we actually do as elected officials. And I would challenge any elected official to do more of a grassroots effort than I do. I have gone door to door. I have talked to thousands and thousands of West Des Moines residents. You have to meet them where you're at. It's fine to have a town hall if you want to, but guess what? Nobody comes to those. They've got busy lives and things to do. You got to meet the voters where they're at. That's why you go door to door and you talk to them and you, every door that I've gone to, I've asked people, what can we do better for you in West Des Moines? And you know what? People are pretty darn happy. But every once in a while, there's a suggestion that somebody has. And I take that and I write that down. Sometimes I send an email to our staff and say, could you look into this? Could you look into that? I also have a mayor's advisory council that I started, and I put out, spent my own money to do it, and 412 people applied to be on the mayor's advisory council. I've done two of them now, 30 people on each council. I've had to expand the number of people that serve. I'm trying to get everybody in to participate, to give me feedback and input on how we're doing, and for me to give updates on what we're doing as a city. Huge grassroots effort. You have to meet people where they're at. Nobody's going to work harder than me to do that. Everybody's got my cell phone. You can call anytime.
Wonderful. Okay. Do we have a 30-second timer on that timer? We do. Okay, let's do it. Okay. Fun lightning round. 30 seconds for each. What is one thing you would like to see improved or added to West Des Moines in the next decade? So improved or added to West Des Moines in the next decade. Let's start with MJ.
So kind of right along the lines of stuff I've talked about before. I want better public transit. I want bump outs on Fifth Street. I want, I want a program to help residents do a little tactical urbanism on their streets to slow down traffic when they think the traffic is going. to slow down traffic when they think the traffic is going too fast.
Thanks, MJ. Kevin.
The, to see the Grand Experience come to fruition, that's been talked about for a long time. It is still in the works, but it is going to happen. Also, to see Valley West Mall redeveloped, that's long overdue. Unfortunately, that's been tied up because of bankruptcies. The city, you know, is doing everything now that we possibly can with the developer to make that happen. We also need to continue providing assistance in any way we can to our long-term senior residents.
Thank you, Kevin. Back to you, Russ.
Kevin stole my thunder. I mean, Valley West Mall is going to be unbelievable, something out of story, but can't wait to see that happen. It is going to be an absolute game changer. The Grand Experience, Water Park Hotel, Convention Center, it's going to be twice the size of the Great Wolf Lodge in Kansas City. There's going to be restaurants and breweries and all kinds of fun things around there. They're making a family fun center. There could be a potential 18-hole miniature golf course there. They're looking at all kinds of different things. One of those surf, wave surfer things and all kinds of things are going to be absolutely amazing. We have got so much momentum, we're attracting so many people to our community, and we are becoming a destination, and we are on a roll.
Thank you. Doug.
I'm not going to talk about anything fiscal. I want to add an ecosystem comment. I'm looking, I see Mr. Adam in the back, I see Ms. Kenneth in the back here, and I think about, could we add a new employer? And could we collaborate more closely together between the schools and the city and the different companies around town to try to drive more economic development into this town that benefits everyone? Stuff like that.
Thank you. Doug. Renee.
I would say that affordable housing is still top of my list. I think that is critical for this city. I'd like to make sure that we are still investing in human services. West Des Moines is probably one of the only cities that have a human services department. People have this perception that we in West Des Moines are sitting here, all of us are rich and all of that. We have a lot of people with a lot of need, and things are only going to get tougher. And I want to make sure that we continue to invest in human services, continue to allow Audrey Kenneth to do what she does, and let's continue to make affordable housing a top priority.
Thanks, Renee. Jenny.
I want to make sure in the future that we are still the welcoming and inclusive community that we are now. I think it's incredibly important, whether it's through our schools and the work that Matt and his group has done, and it, that is one of the biggest strengths of this community, and I want to just continue to see that grow. But that's going to take work from everyone. That doesn't just happen. We are all part of making sure that our community stays inclusive and welcoming for all residents.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, closing statement from everybody. In closing, what's one message you'd like voters to remember when they head to the polls, or if there's something that we didn't touch on today that you want to stress? One minute per candidate, please. Let's start with Kevin.
One thing I want people to take home with them is that I am responsive to their phone calls, their emails. I am the voice of the people. If there's something that's on your mind, you contact me, whether it's Ward 1 or not. And I get phone calls and emails from people outside of my ward all the time. And that's fine, because the votes I take does affect everybody in West Des Moines. You need to be the voice of the people and be able to listen to their needs, and then bring it back to the city and see how you can help fix whatever their issue is.
Thank you, Kevin. Doug.
I want to thank the voters for enabling me to serve the last four years. Like I said, I will always be the best steward of your money that I can be. I will also be responsible and responsive to your outreach to me, and I'm hopeful to serve another four. This is not an easy job. I think people don't understand that. Maybe the only tougher job might be schoolwork, but it's tough, and we are incredibly lucky. I'm lucky to get to serve with these great people up on the dais there. It's been the honor of my lifetime to serve you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Jenny.
First of all, thanks, Hugh. Thank you to all of you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it. I don't have to tell you this if you're sitting here, but of all the government levels, the level of government that affects your life the most on a day-to-day basis is local government. And I hope that I have shown you that I am someone who will listen, who will show up, who will want to be there for you in any way that I can. And I also want to make sure that you know that we will apply our values equally to all of our residents, and definitely make sure that I will make sure that you are heard, you have an equal voice, and that this city continues to be safe and inclusive for everyone.
Thank you, Jenny. Renee.
Thank you, Catherine, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum. We appreciate that, and thanks for each of you for being here. I'd like for you to take away from this, for those of you who may know me or don't know me, is that I have a proven track record. I am visible in Des Moines. There's probably not a night that I'm not in the city of West Des Moines doing something for a business or a constituent. I go to ribbon cuttings, whether they're small in Valley Junction or whether they're Topgolf. I don't pick and choose, because every business is equally important. I am a person that cares deeply about folks and individuals. I have a proven track record for that, for all that I've done. So I am an experienced civic leader, business leader, and public servant. And it is the people that make life so great in West Des Moines. And it's an honor to sit right at that seat as the first African-American woman elected to city council in 130 years. To serve, to listen, and to lead, and to learn. And I ask for your vote, and I ask for you to continue to let a proven leader serve for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. MJ.
Yeah, I thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for those who are watching online. I feel awkward saying this now, but I do have a town hall on Sunday at Crossroads Park at 5:00 p.m. You know, if people want to come chat. I'm a little less awkward when I'm not nervous in front of a crowd, you know, so I'm a little less awkward one-on-one. But also, like, I'll, you know, I'll be back out knocking doors and, you know, listening to people as I can. So I just, you know, thank you all for being interested in local politics. As Jenny said, this is what has the biggest impact on your lives.
Thank you. MJ.
I think voters are going to have a clear choice on November 4th. I've got the educational background and the training needed to be mayor. I served on the community and the West Des Moines Human Service Advisory Board for seven years before running for city council. Then I served in city council for 12 years, and I've been mayor for the last four years. My opponent doesn't have the same educational background, doesn't have the community service that I have, and hasn't served in the same capacity. He's never been elected to office and has, doesn't have the experience, doesn't understand the issues the way that I do, and has never led anything. I'm a proven leader with a proven track record. We have cut taxes, we've had a game-changing quality of life amenities, we have increased public safety, and we have grown jobs in the economy. I am proud to be mayor. I've worked extremely hard because I love this job and I love this community, and I'm asking for your vote on November 4th.
Thank you, Russ. Okay, we've got two minutes. We're going to do something fun at the end here. In one word, we have to, just one word. You can't do two words, you can't do a sentence. One word. In what, in one word, what makes West Des Moines special? Let's start with Doug.
People.
Lovely. MJ.
People.
Excellent. Renee.
People.
Excellent.